Right, good evening everybody.
Good evening.
Welcome to this meeting of Buckinghamshire Council's very own planning committee. And I've come away from Vancouver today to get to this meeting, so I'm hoping it's good stuff. And I see that trees are high on the agenda and I have to say there are a lot of trees in Canada to get us started. Um, that's why there's a public session first of all. And so we have a public session with standing orders for E F G for a maximum of 15 minutes. Members of the public shall not speak for more than three minutes. And so I think the member of the public who is here is Ian, Ian Hopcraft, who is tree expert. No, he's a specialist. He's a specialist. Okay, you're very welcome Ian. Do you want to give us three minutes of your expertise? Stand and see you are on camera as well.
My name is Ian Hopcraft, I'm a former tree officer at the council and current tree ward in Buckinghamshire. And Heather suggested that I come along and speak about the trees in County Tor, the three Western red seeders.
Which are also on our agenda for some time.
So I know of a few trees in spite of the tree surgeon, you were running circulated by the tree ward, was this what was going on? And I'll try and be as brief as I can. These trees were elements in a very, very important group as we approached the town centre along the London route. And you see the bridge and those trees in front of you, but there's quite an unusual species, copper beech, turkey oak, the western red cedars. These are the ones, so they make a really strong contributions to the world of the town centre. I have found no evidence that the word was in any way illegal. One, the letters posted on the site that seems that they followed the correct procedure in five days' notice. That they considered the trees to be dangerous. I don't understand why, it's what they said. And that is acknowledged by the council, the county council. And they were told that they could go ahead. And there is a duty in these circumstances to replant, the duty to not a planning condition as is where it normally. The letter. They can't make conditions on these things, but there is a standing duty to replace law. So it's a shame that the trees have gone. They are proposing to be planted with three orders on this group to know that this is which is a native tree, very typical of the science, so it's a good choice of species. It's nice one. And as a solution, if the council's tree officers don't have time to respond to these five days' notice, or sometimes they get immediate notice. Contractors say, we are going to find this tree because it's dangerous and you'd better come and have a look at it instantly. So there's a short circuit for the normal six weeks' notice. And so in future, the tree wardens could be asked to go and look at the situation, advise if they're unable to do so. But micro-hunters self, in that with trees, nothing like for. The only way is to eventually burn a copy of the term tree law, which is an expensive book of shakira, outdone and insufficient pockets of up in the town council. But if you're able to issue a payment, you get about £240. Oh, my amen.
Thanks.
You were much.
So that's what Ian's expertise brings to the party. I know there's been a lot of real anger and emotion about this. Trees have gone, so a little emotion, but it's really a question now of what we do next, isn't it? So I've got, Robin actually put his hand on first and then Chris.
Ian, thank you for what you said. The real concern is going forward. The real concern is the protection of trees which remain, which are not part of that application, so I feel happy to talk about those. And what could we do apart from the fact that I think they were all under a protection order, or were they not? Can we do to make sure that next time, if there is next time, we don't lose them incrementally? Because the statement he made about them being a, it looked like it's an arbitrary, um, about made statement. And and there is issues with going and buying ability with the band. You know.
Well, Ian, oh, should I just make your comment?
No, I think if I don't do it, Ian might have to say it.
So the trees that are standing inside the conservation, if they've got a stem, they've got a very popular, you know, chest height. So five million meters long, already enjoying the protection afforded to them by the conservation area regulation. This means that under normal circumstances, if you want to tell or produce one of those trees, you must give six weeks' written notice to the planning authority. And the focus of that is so that the planning authority can consider whether or not they should make a new tree preservation order to stop that word going ahead. If they think the work should go ahead, they won't make them all. If they think the trees are insufficient, immediately they won't make them. We've seen the notice. So it's important to understand the difference between giving notice to the planning authority that you are about to do something. And actually, as would the case, the tree preservation order asking for their admission.
Just that.
Yeah, it's a, you said about the, and the, is there anything we can, in the town council, do to increase even the access for a tree preservation, as I was thinking, if you can't make on yourselves, no. That's down to the sector's standpoint, yeah.
Thanks, thanks, council.
So following on from that, I've got another point, sorry, but following on from that, if we were to ask a tree preservation orders to be put on remaining significant trees in the area, and I understand you and Michael and whoever could quite easily identify for a suit which those trees are. Wouldn't that do anything to stop them saying that tree looks unsafe in top five days? And it's coming down because it seems the five day thing would still apply even if it had a CTO.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct. If you have a tree preservation order, maybe those five day notices still apply. If you find that your tree with a preservation order on it is dangerous, it's dead. Then you must give five days' notice and you can then go ahead with the work if it's urgent. It is extremely urgent. So William knows that you can do it instantly, but you must then keep records for your own attention, your own defects if you possibly do manage it. So it's the big difference between a tree preservation order, conservation area protection of the trees is if it's subject to a preservation order, normally need the permission of the planning authority before you do works, whereas if it's just a conservation area, you only have to notify them.
Okay, and would it be helpful if we were, whoever it is, a substantial, we're actually being more mindful of the condition of the trees in our area? Sounds like we were taken by surprise and they got away. What? Is, would it be better if our tree wardens were more aware of the condition of the trees in the area?
Yes, I mean, the more information you've got on trees in your town, the better.
Yeah.
Do we know the example of the living biomass of the trees in Buckinghamshire, increasing or decreasing? I suspect it's increased. I suspect we've got more cubic metres of living timber now than we had 10 years ago. It's each year they're going to be increased. So yes, the more information we've got, the better you are to, and better position you are to the trees.
So in answer to council's statutory, it's about partly about tree preservation orders, we've talked about being a bit more proactive ourselves. Sorry, I'm taking that off the floor. Can I just go down to the council now?
Ian, thanks for coming on tonight. It's great to see you. Question I've got is, can anyone declare a tree as unsafe? Or do they have to be of a certain professional stature to do that?
Anyone, yeah.
What you're saying is, ooh, that tree looks a bit, I'd better cut it down. That needs changing.
There are consequences. If you consider that the tree to be dangerous and you say it, but it has planning intention. One, you could be prosecuted. Two, you have a duty to replace it with neutral in recent time, which normally is by the end of the next practices. So there are consequences, the most serious one, which is getting criminal record if they're destroying a tree, which is.
Sorry, I'm sorry, can you repeat that here? I'm trying. Why does someone get criminal record?
If they're prosecuted and found guilty of damaging a preserved tree or tree conservation area, then that's a criminal offence. They can end up with criminal record.
So what's to say that for any of that work on will go to be underway? That then we'd have to be an evidence trail to show that professionals are saying that tree is dangerous, see the looks accident and everything else?
Yes, if you have had to report an arborist saying this tree is dangerous because it's, that's a bit hitherto, it's looking apart.
Yeah.
And you can show that with your defense, you're a prosecutor and the legislature would probably let you off.
So what you're saying is that the door is open, people can say, this is over, but there are consequences if they've got it wrong with.
So we haven't been able to prove that that tree was not unsafe and therefore a criminal act has occurred.
It's difficult to prove negatives, so what you've, the opportunities are that had the council not agreed to the felling, had the planning authority not agreed to the felling, the owners or the contractor could be prosecuted. That prospect is out of play because they've got a letter saying, you know, you may have it. Now, I don't know what danger they were talking about. I've only heard rumors. It may be that the council's planning department, tree officer, have already identified it. We don't know. It could be that they're, I mean, that they're retaining more percentage.
And I think we've sort of aired this, and I know there's been a lot of sort of anger and emotion, but I think this has happened. And we noted with, what, what, no, no, do you want to?
Who has the question on the replacement varieties? Has the town council or indeed environmental organisation like the Buckingham Society, is there sound somewhere, someone, we can suggest varieties that we might, we might refer to all of it. And one of the nice things about this western redwood seeders is the texture, there were lovely contrast texture between the copper beech and the oak and then, and as you say, it's a particularly visual picture as you came down on the road. And it would be nice to try and replicate that, and I don't think all just do it.
Is there any way that we can?
Well, you can ask the planning department to require the replanting duty to be with me, with the western red seeders. And you can ask, on mainland, but you can ask that it's suggested out because that's what was taken then. So it was actually more legalistic to replant it with western red seed, it would be well, it was only because it knew a real lack of purpose.
Yeah, Karen, I know, sorry. I'm just being shown, the county has already said, you can go, it has given permission for the planting of the trees. I think this is about what we do going forward, isn't it, to make sure we can replenish the.
My wife's just tired of reading straight from the left up. The condition placed on it was that three, I'm sorry if I'm getting this wrong. And those kind of toes are, well, actually there's a heavy standard of size of 12 centimetres. If you plant it by the end of the first planting season.
So the stable door has.
The condition placed upon.
I'm going to take the last two comments from Karen.
I like Ian's suggestion that we could offer our expert tree wardens as a means of Buckinghamshire council checking on some of these urgent applications without them having to drive up the county to do it. And I don't know what the right mechanism is for that, but that feels like something we could, we could do.
I, by all accounts, I've talked to Chad, the tree officer, who's quite, he doesn't live in Buckinghamshire, so he's, does know the owner.
That would be a good way forward.
I think Robin's saying, no, he doesn't, we think it's. Yeah, yeah, we were hearing that earlier today.
Yeah.
So, shall we, shall we, last one, then we need to move.
Irrespective what took place, and I'll refresh the future date of the night, because I think we've got lots of information to deal with. And we bring together what we've got to try and have a plan for the future, whatever that is, how we deal with this in a steady way rather than, rather than odd of a way, and it needs to, it needs to be, you have an agenda. I can be planning the environment and to discuss how we deal with these issues.
While looking at trees is one of the things on the agenda, I should be clear, the suggestion of, etc. They did apply and go through the procedures and they have been given the better and the mission to be.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I'm not, not to mention that.
It's looking forward, isn't it?
Looking forward, we've got, we can't do nothing about the path, look, see how we can.
So it was suggested, we take.
We asked through the park that to attend the meeting, the information we've learned, some of the best practice to try and make sure.
We've got a prescription.
Yes.
Sorry. Thank you, Robert. One last, last comment?
Well, it's, Robin's put forward a motion that we asked for a report on this whole matter with recommendations and what to do on the picture. And I think this probably comes back to this committee, not the environment, I would suggest, because these trees are not always on our land. Whereas the planning committee, we look at the trees in the whole town, not just on our land, plus the ones on the land we take care of. I think this is a planning matter, I think reports come back here.
Very happy to come back here. Can I go to, can I go to first? Because it sounds like it's for me, it's not me.
You should come here first. It's my, I'm seconding problems.
Okay, are we all in favour or?
And we're not actually.
Not being a big, no, I wouldn't make it a pose, I was just asking through the chair to the town clerk whether that could be possible.
Looking at tree surveys and environmental things, I will discuss it, it's on my action list.
And I just chanted, then it might be rather.
So we've got enough going on here to get a good one with situation and we absolutely hope that this situation doesn't turn worse again. And I move us on to the actual agenda of the meeting, Ian.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Like my last word, the planning conditions on to the eleven notices. It was a piece of the plan. There's words mentioned in the letter that they would suggest that they should rework it as it's your duty.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Ian, as a well worth parting shot, right. So we have a meeting agenda, apologies for absence, Jane Mortes is here, so, no apologies for absence, right, okay. Actually, well, quite a lot of western red cedars in Vancouver, Vancouver Island, the sound people, it's my love de Jean vu here. declarations of interest, any declarations of interest? Robin?
I may ask the honourable planning committee. Is that that for me?
Pretty good, see you.
Yeah, we should. We might as well say it, never happen.
I should report it, thank you very much, Ian. Item three minutes, we last met on the 16th of June. Are we happy with those? Poses please, no, Fran, second of the minutes, Lisa, and those in favour? Thank you very much, that was unanimous. Item four, Buckingham society nomination deputy, there have been a few changes in this role. And we're delighted, we're sorry to lose this. We're delighted to welcome councillor Roger New on the council, so we now need to find somebody to deputise if Mrs Cummings is not available. That's okay, so.
She's purely to effect.
Okay.
Not noted.
Noted. Done deal.
Can we add with us one to come on the end of that sentence?
No, he knows the way.
Thank you very much, Ian, I should read this and talk definitely. Right, I'm going to move on to item five, Buckingham neighbourhood plan. Vale, Vale's good plan, Buckinghamshire local plan, can see any update? I've had various pieces, I've had a very nice note from Mark Hall and I've had the update obviously from the. Would you like to give us a formal version of where we're at on?
Of course, I'd be known to you, current working strategies that we would have a very brief, hopefully brief, inside the country in form of extraordinary before environment to look at the recommendations and then the planning agreement.
So we can then bid it out and get it to the, uh, referendum.
Otherwise, there's quite a long gap. There are stages to go through, members need to have their agreement, the working strategy at the moment, we've been looking, tension for referendum in September.
Good, well done to all concerned, there's been a lot, in Mark's note, he did comment on how many meetings there have been to get it. Yes.
Yeah, just to say on the Buckinghamshire plan, that will be working its way through growth and infrastructure select committee. I sent an email around with the agenda for members to read. You will know that that's got the housing strategy on it, which will perform a part of that, which is the homes and this and whatever. Also, on that agenda, it's got about HMOs, which I know that it's been discussed here. And also a culture and letter strategy, which perhaps we're interested in. But I think basically the things that members do have the right, if you read through the agenda, on the top end of the agenda, there's a link. If you open that link, it will tell you how you can go if you want to, because any person can read it and ask any question they want to, as long as they're in time. Open that link, it will tell you the procedure. I know you've been, you've been, yes, but yeah, we can discuss that another day. But it is important that the views of this council's heard.
Yes.
And that is an opportunity and, you know, the agenda was only published today, so you've got it immediately and you've got enough time, if you want to agree by email, I should be sat in that meeting anyway, so. Well, that's not wonderful, but I'll be sat there, depending on what they'll say.
Probably valuable.
Sure.
Okay, so that's item five, we, that's to note, but really good thought. Item six, a big moment for councillor Tri, North Bucks Parish Consortium, any news?
Thank you very much. I'm sure I have had bigger moments.
We hope you have.
But building on the little pile beneath me, yes, the NBPPC, the North Bucks Parish's Planning Consortium, had our first meeting on the 18th of June. With, starting with the AGM, Pat Hartcastle was re-elected as chair. Lou Munga is no longer attending the meetings, because he's not part of that. But it was thought that due to the election and a number of good people that had a lot of expertise were no longer councillors, that they would possibly change their constitution to allow, similar to the way the council does it, to co-opt said people or people that they think can support them and help them in various ways onto their committee. And the first one probably will be the Buckingham society. As they had councillors as members, so that would carry through. So then we went into the quarterly meeting, our first quarterly meeting. And it was discussed about no funding for the local neighbourhood plans and how that may roll through to the smaller parishes that really can't afford too much anyway, so they're really schmike stymied now. Yes, and they were quite surprised that Knock at that time hadn't said anything. Battery farms were discussed around Steepall, Clayton area. And that will be ongoing. And then we jumped on to the judicial review on the 10th October this year, where they're going to combine the two reviews with one specialist judge as opposed to before it was going to be two separate reviews with just any judge that was on the circuit. So they reckon that's a positive way of going and are looking quite positive in the outcome of those, those reviews. Shelly Park being pushed back and Sol and Chase progressing. And we'll have more news on that as things develop in our next meeting, which is going to be on the 15th of October.
Next to, to Martin.
Thank you, moving on, a junction.
Oh, is there more?
No, no, no.
Robin had his, her first.
Well, just what, what are the judges for reviews for Mount?
Uh, that's a very good question. Yeah, go on, remind me properly, because I'm on the top of the pile, this big pile of mine at the moment.
The wall that drives, is dangerous.
That's all right.
And there are two judicial reviews lodged and have been accepted, and one is from Wildfish, that charity, they are going to be putting their case for sewage and pollution risks, which is, and the other one is from Jane Wood, a parishian. And her grounds are on the English. By, by Versti, that guy.
Good start.
All of those are making a, I think.
Yeah, there's been several reports. Just pointing out the extraordinary number of errors. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, thank you, Mark. Did Pat circulate the stuff I sent him on? On the pollution drainage stuff on Buckinghamshire council?
No.
I expect he's saving that until after, from meeting to before the meeting.
Yeah, because there were a lot of new people there, we were.
Rather indirectly or directly links with not, it won't affect it, but it's on similar grounds to the the elements of it affected with the calling to sacred state, it's very similar and close. So it'd be interesting to see what they, I'll be interested in their view, was interested in somebody else's view of it when it, when it goes through there to see how it proceeds. Because it's not only, you may not be aware here, but there was some, the towns in, I think it was Chelmsford and Garth, where, where actually they had the whole street full of sewage because of the system not failing and, you know. So it's a problem across Buckinghamshire, so it's not, though we may be here to be aware that we may pick it up. Be interested to hear your thoughts when it comes up, because they were badly affected because of the age of their infrastructure in Chelmsford.
The 19th century sewage systems, it was great when it started, that would be a blast of day, thank you, Robin.
Um, I, yeah, I just wanted to touch on that judicial review and particularly the wild fish element of it, because if, if they do manage to win that review, then that will stop the building or slow down the building of housing in Meads Norton because the Buckingham sewage system can't deal with the extra houses at the same time as we're building lots of houses in Buckingham, that that same sewage system can't deal with. So I think we should watch that with some interest.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you very much for your time. Shall we go on to the planning application list? If it says it's too difficult, but we'll see. Tony, I have to look to you because you were at the meeting this afternoon. We had. Um Tony, I have to look to you because you were at the meeting this afternoon, um we had about five carols to read, two options in there. We need a replacement to the roof.
Yep.
Roof cars, um any opening thoughts for members to consider? Do you want to say, Tony?
Oh yeah, I mean, it's a building that desperately needs work to it, otherwise it's going to fall down.
That's a good start away.
I can see no issues with it, I saw um it, Christine, as Tony says, um it needs needs doing um. And it's, yeah, it's not anything um which is altering the character, et cetera, of the building. Um it's um making it good, basically.
Thank you very much. John, were you last?
Yeah, I was today as well, I can see that.
Yes.
Used to be done.
Okay.
Yes, in the um. Oh, neighbourhood plan, the uh the inspector did say that he was pleased with the very uh. Good way that we uh make available uplifts of uh other, you know, older buildings.
Yes.
Especially in the conservation area, so um I think this goes to show, you know, this just falls right in that.
So items one and two, um. We have no objection that we. John?
Should we just say the usual subject to the heritage building officers' comments?
Yes. But I think. So no objections, just subject up to the heritage officers, oh, thank you. I need to move to prepare, right, so obviously proposal um.
A second it, well, you just.
I propose it. Um all in favour, all those in favour? Um okay, that's me, so thank you very much indeed.
Everybody except Robin. I mean.
Staying, yeah, as usual, okay, nobody against, right, thank you. Oh, I put the both of them separate. Item one, um proposed by Fran. Um so I proposed my second one, Fran, um whilst we took photos again. All in favour of item one, okay, all in favour, yes, yes, um any extensions, but nobody against. Item two, uh I propose Fran seconds and all in favour. Thank you very much indeed, and any extensions, well, thank you very much, sorry about that. Get the handrail started. Uh item three, uh two White House cottages. Uh Letchy Road, eight twenty-one, where the household of Arthur, a recent girl, looking at the state of the girl, I guess. Very standard, but so definitely the work is um, uh one one can see why it's been put forward. Tony, I was looking to you quickly because you were sort of.
Well, one of the things is there's it's 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 a lone building, isn't it, and out on the road and. Nobody's going to see the difference from the road, so nobody could object to that, and it's just another building that. Needs work and replacing, yeah.
Proposes still Jane character, etc.
Yeah.
Um comments from members, please, Martin?
Have they got an asbestos removal um plan in place?
There isn't one on the website yet, but. Um probably will be conditioned.
It is um listed as it's an asbestos roof, so it will be part of the.
Don't apply into Buckingham.
So is it something we need to raise with them or or do we decide?
I think think that they will be fine with that, because they must they must do it all the time.
That's what you think, you know, anybody could agree to it.
This is building.
Okay, so we've managed it, good, right, Roger?
Um it's an environmental health issue, remove the asbestos. So it might be worth checking if the environmental health has commented on the application.
Yeah, okay.
But I need a licence to remove it anyway.
Yeah, yes, yeah. So uh that sounds that we're moving to support this, but with that caveat, and John?
I was going to say, someone's saying no objections, the subject to the.
Exactly. Yeah, okay. Um so um can I propose for that, please? Martin and seconded, or don't, and all in favour? Thank you very much, any extensions? Okay, so thank you very much indeed, and then. Number four, twenty-four London Road. Oh gosh, variation condition four, um Tony, were there any particular comments on that this afternoon?
Well, the the neighbour has no objections to it, who who is going to be the most effective, really, so on that basis.
Yeah, other members' thoughts on this one, are we happy to let it go through?
Yeah. Well, we're making that one from the neighbours in perpetuity.
That's true, but the glance can be changed, so that if the next one, then what if it's false?
Yes. Yeah, okay, so um. Uh I take it that we have no objections, so um I'll propose this one. Uh twenty-four London Road variation condition four relating to application. And uh can somebody second it, Tony, thank you, and all in favour? Uh thank you, any uh a step against?
I am abstaining.
I'm abstaining as well.
Right, okay, three extensions then, yeah, thank you very much indeed. Um so now we've got amended plan, lost Lorian Mount Pleasant Close. Um where we will be having a lot of um a bit of dejay of view, because it's talking about. Removing the existing bungalow and replacing with a two-storey residential dwelling. Hmm, um and I think there was a previous discussion of this, wasn't there?
Then we have done with the, what what has happened is the. Really, officer has realised that the red line of the site did not include Mount Pleasant Close. So they didn't have any right apparently to drive to their own front door. Uh so this is just the new red line map, and it makes no difference at all to what's proposed for the site. Which members have no objection.
Uh, John?
Um I'm slightly curious about this, because if I looked at the map of my house. There's no red line on all the roads that I need to use to get to it, is Mount Pleasant Close a private road? Is that why?
I think so, yes.
Yeah.
But you will have an easement so that you can get to your private.
Right, um Martin?
Oh, sorry, I was just catching up on the reading here, it says members opposed the application on sixteen December twenty twenty-four.
Oh, that the the reason for opposition has been. That was what, that was what it meant, yeah.
Okay, because I can't believe I didn't object to a loss of housing stock in the bungalow area.
Seem to remember that conversation.
Lots of another bungalow, but I think members are here to speak. They say, but we can't do anything about it, because people insist on doing it.
Okay, so all thing asked to do now is to sort of make a correction in a way, or to agree to a correction to allow them to actually get access to their own property. Um uh so I propose that we accept this, and could I have somebody to second that? Roger, I think you actually, uh all in favour? Okay, well, so I've got a few there, um any extensions? To there, Lisa, I've got it, anyone against? Martin and John? So it's correct, like that news. Um. Not for consultation. Item six, Nelson Street, where it's been a. Uh it's been used as an office and for uh personal residents. Uh would like to use it as a residential property, any thoughts around the table? Uh John, I think just keep Fran to the post.
Um I've got an objection to this.
Thank you, Fran?
I can see no issues at all.
Does anybody else have any objections? If not, can I suggest that we um propose no objections, and I will propose that, can I have a second of that?
If it's not consultation.
Sorry, so.
Not for consultation.
We like better footing occasionally.
So we, so it's not for consultation, why are we actually talking about it, we're just noting it?
Yes.
Yeah. It's a mission.
Okay, right, so we we noted and we give it a a warm note, I think. Supportive note, um item seven, three Cecil's yard, strat for the road. Going down the side of horse chest that went wrong. Uh. And again, that is not a consultation, but we just note it. Uh and are we happy to note that?
Yeah.
We have it in public and noted, I get fewer phone calls when people complain, I worked.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Perfected for it, and it's massive.
Yes, and it just needs to be pulled out of control, I think, yeah, thank you very much indeed. Uh item eight, forty-six Highland Road, sort of lawfulness, proposed direction, single story rear extension, again, we are mentioning this because it doesn't need. Uh. No, it's not more than to get in under the wire. Thank you, and item nine, Cooper's War. Um with a bit of, or the horn, yes, I've got, uh need bring reducing and brighter a little bit. And some other small works, and the works have been approved by director of the platform, all residents in agreement, so I take it that we just note that as well. Um for information only, live they notice, we've had that discussion already, so I'm going to go back to that one. Um item eight, Ron?
Anything is if we couldn't make any decisions. Members couldn't make any decisions because it wasn't out the agenda, it's just whether. Um if anyone wants to make a decision, that's the point, that they can make a recommendation, if that's what they wanted to do. Because it's on the agenda at that point where we've been discussing it in the public, it's only just to say that, I'm not suggesting that book for them wanting to do, but.
We did, we did agree that the part would.
Yeah, we don't need to do that, it's just that.
Yeah, okay.
I was just going, just going to say pretty much the same thing, but um we we should minute it within the meeting.
Yeah.
Because um otherwise it's not going to be minuteed, as it was in the public session.
Uh thank you very much indeed.
Yeah.
So we note that we are going to um ask the clerk in the office to um. What shall I say? Report, if it makes me tell you back here.
I need it, Ron.
On on the tree, so we'll make sure we've got a grip on the procedures as we have. Uh item eight is planning decisions, um to note. Planning decisions made by Buckinghamshire Council following comments by Buckingham Town Council, um.
No, I was going to say, thank you.
You skipped on.
Uh but I'm item eight at the moment.
No, item nine within the planning application is yours.
Don't, no, we just took a peek, it's on it.
Oh, really? Yeah.
Why would we just talk about it?
Well.
Uh there's another, there's an item eight involved, John, planning decisions, and how to that.
So there's nine, nine items within planning.
Yeah, right.
Planning.
Could I just talk about that one then?
Okay, which one do you want to talk about?
This Highlands Road.
Why? Seems like um are all in favour of democracy, um but.
All right, now if you've done it then.
We've done it.
It's 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 um with input, it's, it don't look right.
Yeah, I was going to ask for a um a. Traffic plan, because it's right next door to the school.
It's a bit of lawfulness for proposed direction, single story rear extension. Traffic plan.
I'm sure you do that.
Then, well, it's going to get busy, isn't it, at certain times, and.
Yeah.
We really don't want lawyers and other things coming for their building stuff at particular times, that's what I was going to say.
Quite actually, I have to try that right opposite it is the big number thirty-four, Highlands Road.
Which also has a lot of work done to it.
Work done to it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was at a state for that um bit. I don't know where I was, I don't know where I was on my file there.
It must have been nice, very much.
You're missing your laptop, aren't you?
Ron, I'm now, I'm now item eight, planning decision.
Right, point of all, and I know this would be a radical change. Given the confusion that we had to, when we have. Could we possibly have made, for example, money counts to.
A B's and C's.
Well, either that or we substitute, so.
John.
So for example, seven becomes seven, item one of item seven becomes seven on one, rather than just one.
Okay, we can.
Can we look into that?
We can look into that, yes, can I move on?
Yes.
Uh actually, planning decisions, I'm going to move on slightly more loosely, and I think that's enough, um just to keep you. Rick, um those are approved, we've got the town council's response, some, uh well, one was refused, that we oppose. The uh HMO, which is um good to know, and not for consultation, uh the tree, so. Is there any other comment on, oh, I've never put thought, please, let's just please, sad tree, John. Are there any other comments on item eight? Not for consultation, or Fishers Field as well?
Yes, I'm quite pleased about that, because when you look at the Fishers Field house history, there isn't one. So clearly the house has never been built, because it's not on the system. Um Kentucky was built, and I, they were across the yard, were removed, so they couldn't do it anyway.
Great.
And the officer was of the.
Great, thank you, Roger, and I was, sorry, thank you very much, Jonathan, Robin, you have.
Just to make on me, that HMO, it might be worth people reading that report. It's got the figures of how many rooms there are in HMOs. Um um and the figures of um, you know, how many are licensed, um HMOs, it might, members looking at that, and then if they think it's something. They're interested, they can bring it to bear in their decisions and decision. I think it's three hundred and sort of three thousand, eight hundred or something, that's quite a lot, isn't it?
Again, um. Yeah, and we know that the chairman of the planning department, we're becoming the northern semi area, we have met in. On the twenty-third of July, we gave away to observe the council's views on the landscape of Water Road. Um any thoughts or thoughts on item eight, including that, Roger?
The landscape of Water Road, has the officer report been published yet?
No. No, I was hoping it would be, I hope it will be come time we have our pre-worms.
Yes, twelve Thursday, yeah. And Karen, yes.
Uh I was just going to add that there is a very comprehensive report from the landscape. Um really fun thing, uh really pointing out the severe disadvantages of um. The effect on the rural landscape.
Not mentioning the downright areas of putting a key to the trial.
Yes.
And it's worth all the money underneath it, so they could tell one bit well.
So we're going to go over all of that, very careful, it's a Thursday, well, thank you, Caroline, very much indeed. Um, morning.
Just to say that um you haven't published the agenda for that meeting yet, so. It hasn't been published yet.
Sometimes do get the.
Yeah, so um you know, on the website, you know, there's a meeting. Including Buckingham, first time, which still go out in Dartmoor Street, and um maybe cut a cake and blow a candle, but um um.
Don't push it up too far.
Well, I mean, I might be very big cake, it's only very small.
Right.
And but I'm just saying it hasn't on the agenda, that link I sent you, you can dig me around on that link and find out when it's published.
Right, okay, I'm going to move on, thanks so much. More on that item, um item nine, the main consultation. The former planning committee is. To receive a valid consultation, who is there to talk most meaningfully, it's Catherine. Catherine, talk and then then pass on.
What I would suggest, because you don't have to answer every question, there will be questions that interest members, and questions that they can take or leave. If you would like to have a look at the consultation and just make a note of the answers you would like to the questions you want to answer. Send them to me, I will collate them into a single document, it's an online consultation anyway, so I'm going to have to put it into the. Online form, um if you give them before Friday, I will make it before the due date.
Oh, she's told.
It saves an awful lot of discussion on the table when it's bits and pieces like that.
Um.
Is it acceptable? Is it acceptable if somebody um proposed that you delegate the responsibility for filling out the form based on your comments to Catherine, and then that's a legal?
Yes, um for somebody deaf.
I was just about to pose that.
I think I did that.
I I I wish to wish to thank Catherine for her offer of doing that, and I suppose that we accept her very kind of passion in doing that. And um it's, I I had a brief look at it earlier, it is quite lengthy and there's a lot of different things. It is quite lengthy and there's a lot of different things, but yeah, I think, I think we can. Put our separate hive minds um, together and, and. Uh, response to our queen bee.
Dead, deadlines?
By Friday.
By Friday, yeah. Yes, I need, I, I need members' comments by the eighteen, by the eighteen of that, yeah, but then I've got the. So that was proposed by Fran, seconded by Lisa, are we all in favour of that way forward?
It has to be, isn't it?
That, thank you very much, anybody against the, the extensions I said, Robin?
No, I, I can respond to consultation.
Okay, great, okay.
Mission, um, just to ask through chair, um. Will we, will make a response? Should we um, agree that? The, at some point, the combined response we make it would be made public, I think it's important that. That that is made public because there will be discussion about this. So the value of what people have said would be quite large.
The responses to government, but.
Will, will we?
Consultations are normally made.
No, but I mean, will we make our response?
Well, it's going to be quite difficult, Robin, because there's a lot of it, so if I.
No.
It's supposed to each member be signed that they were going to answer a minimum question or perhaps three or anything, but different to everybody else. It's plenty of pages.
Okay, I think you've answered my question, it's not.
I mean, I'm going to be filling it in as an online form.
No, no.
It may get to the end where it says you'll be printed off. I've made the consultation, how many pages?
Really good, so just, just to say that you.
You gave up the absolute means being.
Yeah, so, so too, too difficult.
You, you normally with these things can um, request a copy of your responses to be sent to your email address.
But we're gonna find that out until the last page.
Yeah, yeah, that's nice. So let's make sure we do. Get it again, yes. Okay, thank you very much indeed, that's um, such an important piece of work. Um, item, moving on, item eight. Statutory consultation in a disabled way in Addington Road.
Yes, you have seen this before, yes. And we were given a week in November to return and answer.
And are we happy now? But no, we, we're not happy, I know we're not.
No, the, the officer was probably dropped on probably eight times, so he was on for the last seven days.
Yeah.
And he filled to nineteenth of November.
Yeah.
Um, so I did it by emails, giving, collated a response, um, which is in the, the note. And um. We said that. If it's a disabled bay, then clearly we'd not be against it because it's.
Mm-hmm.
To help it.
Mm-hmm.
It's not in a very good place on Addington Road, it's where the bank is so steep that it needs six steps to get up from the road to the path.
Oh.
There's no indication of whether they're going to do anything about that, perhaps make a. I don't know, a quadruple ramp or something, I really don't know how you're going to do it. Even a handrail would have to go to street scene rather than highways.
So it's all bad.
We, we wanted, because the parking situation in Addington Road is so awful, we said as soon as it's no longer required. Could be, be deleted so that people can go back to using curbside parking.
Okay, well, I've got lots of plans, I, I'm, I'm Fran.
Okay, so, yes, it's, um, the, the house is on a slope and it's at a higher level than the road. But not all disabilities, um, reasons that people need. Um, access to outside their home is because they can't climb steps or walk very far.
Yeah.
Um, there could be all sorts of reasons.
Yeah.
And as we know, parking in Addington Road is tight, it is a premium. Um, we don't know what this person's um, disability is. Um, and we shouldn't be making judgments about, um, about. Well, it's, it's not in a very good place, it looks like it's outside their house, maybe their house isn't in a very good place.
Yeah.
Um, I can't see any way that we can object to this whatsoever. Um, I think that, um, obviously needs to be able to park near to their house. And not have to go all the way at the other end or in the circle or wherever, which, so they, they have, they have reasons for. Wanting or needing, needing the space outside their house.
Yeah.
Um, so I propose that we have no objections, um. But the proviso, as Catherine um, just mentioned, which we said before, that um, should. The necessity for it.
Remove it.
Be um, uh, not there anymore, um, but it's um, it's removed.
Okay, exactly, but that's your proposal, um, Lisa, are you seconding?
Yeah, I'm seconded, yeah.
But I've argued, run to everyone to speak. Martin?
I should like to point out that, although I have no objection to the disabled bay, it is just a disabled bay. It's not pertinent to any particular person.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, let's hope there's not other people with a badge in that road because they could also use it.
Yes.
Um, on another subject, I'd much prefer maybe the whole road having parking bays because. Sometimes the parking is not the best and you could actually get more cars in if it was a little bit more regimented, but that's something else. But as for this application, I have no objection.
I'm going to see, right, and now the comments, John.
I was just not very clear as to how it was going to be set into the, the road, is it being set into the bank?
No.
No, it's just, it's just.
Just.
Yeah, yeah.
But is there still room to go past it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Little diagram there, it looked as if it was only, only room for a bicycle.
That's the measurement there.
Okay, nice, well, it was, thank you for clarifying.
Oh, I see, yes, I know.
Okay, so, um, Robin?
One observation, of course. This road is now one-way. Where.
I think that part we've had.
Yeah, well, you can't go down it, you can't enter it from the. Otherwise. Yeah, you can, but, but, but it, but it's changed to the limits it used to be, so it's not like.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's certainly made it.
So are we saying that we have to know? Right, that's what I'm gonna be going on the other one.
Yes, there is.
So tell them off, mate. Uh, so we have, we have a second for this table, they're all in favour. Yep, uh, in the gates, extension. And I'm gonna go back and see and get my numbers, right? Then, uh, I've skipped right down to. Do they truly, yes? That's the right word. Uh, okay, so, oh my goodness, item eleven, sweet name, this is what ten hours. It's not going to, is it? So, um, we have a report from the planning car. Uh, connecting member suggestions for street names or Ozy Way faces two, three and four. Now we need to agree on a theme and select fifty to twenty names for submission to the council. Catherine, do you want to give us any more comments on that?
Members were receiving very good suggestions forwards.
Yes, there's a big amount of them.
Basically, just, it's something we propose a theme and somebody's submitted and agree it, then we can just go to say which twenty. Name that they're not getting the one.
Okay, Caroline, who is. I was very good, that's shut about. Yes, we, we do feel passionate about um, street naming because we do think it's important to reflect. Something of the character of the place. Um, on that basis, uh, trees would seem to be a good theme. And perhaps trees with a watery theme. Um, and a, a question really that I'm sure Catherine will answer immediately. I know widow is ubiquitous, but what is the um. Policy on using the Latin name, Salix, Salix is a perfectly good name. Um, for a street I would have suggested, I think it's not widow. It's one of our, uh, uh, suggestions that we're making for the tree names, the watery type of background. Can I send a list in from the society to you, Catherine?
We need to just circle it.
Right, for me, yeah.
Okay, right, I've got, um. Is that chat for a little bit, I know Marky Don's always the parent, he has to use that amount of answers, but um. Uh, what is the policy on, on Latin names? Uh, yes, I thi- I think there's.
There is a talk.
There isn't a policy, um, well, we could just do it for that one particular one to get over the widow, but anyway, I'm not here to talk. I've got Fran, I've got Robin, I've got Roger.
So I'd like to pose, we go for herbs and spices, and the emphasis on the herbs. Um, um, um. Um. Native um, herb species, species, I'll second that.
Yeah, thank you very much, Elizabeth, um.
I want to propose something different.
You want to propose something, oh, my goodness, right, uh, thank you, Robin, you often talk, may I just say Roger first?
No, I'm not often talking, I'm at the planning meeting. More often talking as well, I have noticed that.
Yeah. Right, that's, gives me a life, I've got the gavel, um, I'm gonna go to Roger's first, um.
Okay, I was.
Need to speak up slightly.
I agree with what Caroline said about.
You're a tree man, are you?
I don't think you're that tall. Um, so I, I think we should go for four of Buckingham pub names.
Oh, right.
Personally, not just because. A lot of these other ones, um, have been done elsewhere. Like English River, there's a whole this time, I was bringing them down, but it's with us. So I think, um.
So you're threatening pubs?
Those are the pub.
Yeah, okay, so I've got trees, herbs, last, Rob.
I was going to screen agricultural trades because one worked in agriculture, but.
Yeah.
Listen to Roger, I'm gonna second Roger, pub names, one's been in the old pub in its time. And them having, that coming from a historic family career is like, I, I support you, Roger.
Okay, any other thoughts? I, I'm gonna take John and then on to Fran.
Um, I'm very much in favour of the native herbs. I think that would work well, and it sort of complements what we've all done so far with, with trees. I, I don't, with respect, Caroline, I don't support the trees because we've got trees in batteries already. Um, and I think native herbs like, um, just, you know, interesting words, you know, like heart seeds and primular and. You know, I'm not sure where I go, is that native?
Yeah.
But come free, you know, so, you know, these are all lovely, lovely names.
Okay, okay.
So I'm third.
Yes, I remember that.
I know you think it's a cheap, I know it's a cheap.
So. Oh, my goodness.
Okay, so take nine, you know, one, sorry, I forgot to speak, um. I know that we did used to have, and it was my suggestion um, a while ago, um, for the um, former pubs. Um, however, we have got a few roads already named after some of the former pubs, like Nelson Street. And we've got Mitre Street already, but that's still a pub, um, I just wonder if there are enough. Of those former pub names to actually get enough to personally develop her, because we'd need twenty. Um.
Pubs and pubs, um.
Only me.
So, um, so what I, there was two lines of thought, the first one up was herbs. Thought the spices seemed to have faded slightly, and the second one up would be local pub names, and especially.
There was a formal proposal in the second, uh, to take the new orders that they.
Yeah.
I actually.
I'm fine.
So, uh, I'm gonna.
Just a comment.
Yes, please.
Can we just be mindful that people are going to be living in these streets?
Yeah.
They have to be able to write the addresses easily and explain it on the phone, the road they are living in. And don't not mix the names that are awkward and embarrassing.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Can I say we worked mine for the Latin, it came to Central Road.
No.
All elders. So your uncles too. Right, so I'm, I'm going to, um, go for a vote then on the first proposal, which was herbs. That was my friend and seconded by Lisa.
Yeah, I told, was it herbs and spices? Well, it was, it was herbs, uh, the, the. The category on there is Catherine has, has done it, is herbs and spices, um. Some things, as the spice is um, the, the fruit of the herb plant, basically. So it can, a herb can also be a spice if you're using its seed, um.
Right.
Herbs, spices, though.
I can find it because there was a lot of.
But I would.
Fran proposed on what council's thing proposed, and that's very quickly with a list of spices.
I was, I would, I would want to go with an emphasis on. Um.
Herbs.
Herbs, um, and, um, it being. The native species.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so.
I found words eventually.
But we're talking about the list, Catherine, with herbs as well. That's all just. Yes, yeah, so can we, um, all those in favour then of, you know, using the names on the list of herbs and spices? John, you want to?
I'm voting for.
You're voting, right, voting for herbs and spices. Do I get your vote? Okay, right, so herbs and spices, I think, I think it's rather nice with the.
The cubs will be closed now.
But as I remember it, Robin, every house in Buckingham used to have a pub, so we've got a wonderful, plenty more.
I'm joking, I'm joking about.
I know, I know, wonderful, right, thank you very much.
Now, a lot to read, because we're going to.
Yes.
I will point out that all of these have actually been cross checked versus the existing index, and there are no duplicates. Whereas with pubs, you're going to run into things like Angel and what have been.
We're not going there.
They're not, yeah.
A lot more.
So it's running up to twenty, um, is that something we do at this meeting? Or?
Yeah, I would prefer it, because I'm gonna have to send.
I don't know if I get rid of them.
Can I make a proposal that we answer the poser that suggests first? That, that must appropriate.
We're just writing on this.
You know, that seems, seems rather. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I do know. Ah, great. That's very good. Uh, Fran, you're just busy, so. We could tell him unless you don't, that might be easier, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll get it.
A whole visit just to watch you see how we've done. Well, now, that's all the case.
Okay, I'm gonna change ones, because you've got peppermint now, and watermelon is actually an older.
Watermelon.
Nice name.
It's an old, older.
Yes.
Species than peppermint, is peppermint was a, was a.
Foodborne.
Was a cross.
Don't think wild walks sound.
No, it's weedward. It's very, very good stuff.
Very Riverside.
Yeah, rag walk. Yeah.
Um, Caroline, do you want to, could I add butterbur to the list then, it's going to be herbs? Butterbur, butterbur. It's a, it's a last bit. It's a very large river side plant. Anyway.
Would you use?
And I bet you there was lots of butterbur down there. Is it a verb, is it used in the municipal or? I don't know, it was used in that button, hence the name, here it was kept it cool.
Oh, right, okay, I like those.
Right, now, well, that's spending a lot of time, isn't it? Perhaps leave Fran to do her list and then. Go back to Ori.
I think, okay, so.
You almost said.
I think we need to go round seven, and then, and if everybody does, does, I think, so, I think, yeah. That was, sorry, move on.
Need to twenty names, you want twenty names?
Yeah, because those things were randomly done.
Yeah.
And then we developed a lot of. Do you want to put over here? So you can break it down.
I, I think, Fran, your offer of doing us twenty was. Would it be the easiest thing just to take off the ones you don't like?
I, I, I just pass the, there's, I was lovely, um, character in my youth, in a children's programme.
Pass me the lion.
Pass me the lion, so that's why I could just pass it, because it had a great effect on my mental wellbeing.
Um.
Just wanted to touch upon these comments as well, if there's anything here that would be difficult for somebody to spell, or, or they said, I live in. Uh, I don't know, Marshmallow Lane, maybe they would feel a bit dark about that, you know.
Well, you could.
Sort of a candy.
You could.
Yeah.
You could, could shorten that to Malice.
Yes.
Malice, yeah.
And maybe the sweet, sizzling sweet. Make a bit of a. And maybe the sweet, sizzling, sweet, make a bit of a.
Are we almost there?
Second one, time. Want to pass your, their time.
Yes.
The lovely song, what can we pass in time?
You might want to also.
Right.
Okay, I've got fourteen, I've written down at the moment.
Okay, read, don't read that.
So I've got loveage. Heartsies. Um, chamomile. Cowslip. Watermint. Pop, which isn't on there, but I think it should be, because that's a herb.
There's the raw hops, malsler.
There's a.
Check then, yeah.
Yeah. Um, Lucy gives her apologies, um, she'd forgotten, yeah, so she's been at the old, um, meadow sweets. Um, I don't know whether it's hissop or hyssop.
Hisser.
Thank you, comfrey.
Comes in Shakespeare.
Um, dill, angelica, mallow, cecily and woodruff. Then mallow might be a bit similar to mallard.
Sage.
Yeah.
Sage, yeah.
Tarot. Time.
Time for time, yes.
We're not, I'm doing my part, being time.
Last thing, last thing.
Parsley and thyme.
Yeah.
Dill.
I said dill.
I think bayberry might be a better name, mine is in Bayberry first.
Yeah.
Is that a top?
Yeah, Bayberry, that's ours.
How many are you on now?
Rosemary.
Haven't we got rosemary somewhere else?
I don't know, if you've got parsley and thyme, so.
I think we've got rosemary somewhere else, in fact, where do you know, the names on this list are being checked, like Catherine, that, um, not doubling up on.
No.
So she's stuck with these, mate.
Parsley, sage, rosemary and thyme.
You know, I think it's bayberry, because we can see that, if they are.
Have we got all the characters from the TV children's series?
No, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't got, um, um, Mr and Mrs Onion or the Chive.
Don't worry, just keep on adding six more onto your list.
Yeah, Yarrows quite amazing.
Yarrows.
Yeah, I like that one.
I like that, it's a good old.
And there's Tansy as well, I don't know what Tansy is.
Tansy's nice, yeah.
Tansy's, he's got mass power.
Yeah, yeah, Tansy's good.
Okay, so.
Don't like ransoms, that sounds good.
That's, um, wild garlic.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, so Fran, have a record of what you're heading.
Nineteen, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, I've got nineteen, because I took pop out.
Dill.
Twenty, I've.
I've got it down.
I include the crown and the butterbur.
Okay, butterbur, that's twenty.
They're all right, right. So, uh, do you want to do twenty?
Agreed.
We've got, have we got?
All over the damn shop.
So the, the list.
Ransoms in just for, for fun.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Okay, we've got loveage, hearts, heartsies, chamomile, cowslip.
You, you've not got yours now, but.
No, sorry.
You might just say that's Paige, yes.
You don't, she's got.
Yeah. Yeah.
Angelica, butterbur, chamomile, comfrey, cowslip, dill, heartsies, hissop, loveage, mallow, meadow sweet. Parsley, watermint, I think that's prepped in, because it's by peppermint. Ransoms, sage, cecily, woodruff, tansy, tarot and thyme and yarrows.
Yeah.
Bayberry, which is.
Thank you, Valerie.
What was that, Karen? I didn't hear Catherine saying bayberry, which I think we've mentioned.
Oh, yes, there it is.
It's definitely exaggerated, yeah, yeah.
Bergamot.
Bergamot.
I think.
Bergamots.
Right, can I, can, do we have a?
It, it, it's enough to keep them happy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, so, um, I'd give you Robin for proposing that list.
I'll show them.
Those are for Fran.
I proposed it. Yeah, so Fran, just to answer, I'm going to go with that. And can I say, who are in favour, please? Thank you. Oh, me too.
I have a name for the person in there, haven't I?
Right.
Karen, thank you for putting all this together, actually.
Well, those are, well, we did have a long time. Produce lists from all over the place, and right.
Yeah, but you know, that was a fact, yeah, yeah.
Yes, but you've got to do that, otherwise you spend a little bit of half, and it comes back, and you can't tell, so you've got to do it.
But, but, can I, can I move us on? Um, there's one to do, it's more names, so this seems much simpler. Uh, Catherine, is this something we just want to note?
No, 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 we all agree the name's famous, that, I mean, it's the one street, and she wants two or three species. But it's the land behind the old. What else, and I couldn't find much inspiration, so I went to the list of people that other folk have suggested we use the name of.
Yes, 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 it's right, Dog, you will first.
Yeah, my objection to using names as well, no, so I don't agree with any of that. Um, what I would propose instead is, I'd have something like Vesta, which is the Roman god of the fire and the earth. Or of cars, and also the three hundred year anniversary, um, of, of the Great Fire of Buckingham. Or victory slash peace, because it's eighty years since the VE day, VJ day. Um, or simply Haven, as being a place of safety, a place of warmth, a place of, um, of a place to go. Um, it needed support, and I'm seeing that, and that's in, you know, only for the end of the Second World War, but also when it came to the Great Fire as well. So I'm suggesting either Vesta, victory, peace or Haven.
Okay. So you're second that, is that a?
I was thinking.
Roger, you're second that, okay, so that's on the table. Um, other thoughts?
Yeah, I'm going to suggest part of that, and I'll be honest, why, it's my late wife's grandfather, who owned a cinema. Built the cinema and brought it here in nineteen thirty-two, and when they named the land opposite, it, it ended up being Mackenzie Close. And I put it on the list in probably two thousand or two thousand and one. And, um, and I think, um, my late wife would probably quite like it, so I'm putting it there, and if it's not agreed. Um, she can all look down and think, what do you want, Scarsy? Um, so, um.
Which is Lyndon Park, that's on that list, that, that John was the second, he's.
Walter, wasn't it?
Walter, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Robin.
Um, I'd like to second Robin's, um, suggestion, because I think we've got to come up with three suggestions, if I read this correctly. And I'd like to, um, propose John Roberts, um. Who, whose family have been waiting for a long time for commemoration of, um, his service to Buckingham.
I, I'd second that, the John Roberts, and went to all his daughters.
Mr Parker, what's Parker, Mr Parker's first name?
Walter.
Sorry.
Walter Park.
So, John Roberts, Walter Park.
John Roberts is the third one.
Yeah, he's up there, there's John Roberts up there.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And his family have been asking for, for that, and even like, they've been asking for a very, very long time. But if he made leaves.
Now, what do I do first?
We've had one proposal for a set of three.
Yeah.
And then we've had another proposal for a set of two. I would suggest.
It's four.
Okay, so.
So I thought.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, let me see how many proposals I have, you can have another first, Karen.
Well, we quite like the police station connection. I actually really like the gibbet. The hangman tree was just about up there.
Um, not with a property crisis, probably.
No, then, or.
Yeah, it's.
Or fell away, as they felled all those trees, well, but anyway, apart from that. On the police, uh, connection, Copper's End or Peel End.
Yeah.
Ah, Robert Beale.
Hmm, after Robert.
Why you can live in Buckingham?
So I've now, is it, do you need, Karen, you need to have a second of that, or?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just a suggestion, I'm just a little.
Yes, so, at the moment, we've got, um, John's suggestion on the table. Do Vesta, victory, peace and fourth one.
Vesta, Vesta.
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 Vesta, big tree.
Was there anybody with those names who lived in Buckingham, John? Are you sure? Do you be certain you aren't naming something after? That could have been related to something about this fire.
Yes, sir. John's proposal's the first one, so she's.
Okay, have we got a second of the John's proposal, yeah, we have one, that's right, okay. So, um, and we, all those in favour of the negative, Vesta, victory, Haven and peace. Two, three, and I like peace four, okay. Um, and all those in, uh, sorry, so the next one was a proposal.
We need to get this one away, so. Again, stand, oh, and abstentions, sorry.
There were four votes in favour of your proposal, um, anyone against?
Four.
And any abstentions?
You have this signed, I got.
Oh, gosh. Um, was that four, including me, I, I voted against, yes. Uh, well, I voted in favour of. So, the, that's it, that's it, that's what I was saying, yeah, okay, we'll, we'll come back to that again, sure, there are plenty more options, yes.
Right. Just in case any of those turn out to be popular elsewhere in the county. And we have a backup.
Well, um, do you mean, I said.
So if I, if I check these, and three of these were on the go, because they're already.
Well, yeah, well, listen, I've been checking these as we go along, and then.
All who read this about.
Husband had an auntie, but that's a, a defeat.
I would suggest that, um, Haven, um, has, um, a consultation with a, um, um, I believe, popular cause. Park, um, and therefore would probably not be.
I agree with you.
I mean, we just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been a bit, yeah.
Okay. Tony, have you about to say something?
Well, only that, um, it's been agreed now, so really probably the red one, but the word Vesta, to me. Means, uh, a boy in the back of a curry.
Yeah.
But I really, I went skin and edge of like, Vesta.
Right.
But I'm just targeting some people, eh?
So there's something one name.
They're one, two or three.
No, but it's only going to be one, one rank name.
Give me four options.
So, are we giving?
Four options.
But I haven't checked these, because they're only been introduced, I haven't had a chance to.
Yeah, are we moving on to the other ones, or?
We're going to vote.
I know, I know, we're done, we're done.
We're done.
Well.
I think we have to.
I put an amendment, no? I should put an amendment?
They, they.
No.
We didn't get to vote on the other names, so we only got to vote on one.
Because they actually worked. Because that was, you know, that was one. Perhaps it all worked, yeah.
Oh, thank you all very much.
But if, but if they, if those were rejected, we can come back again.
Thank you.
Yeah, play the music.
Tell them that.
Yeah. Right. One of the side, and this, John Roberts, I know, obviously, is a. Right. Going for the agenda. So action, sorry, number item twelve, regular actions updates. And that is just a list that we'll be seeing filed. And. Appendix A. Are there any points on the appendix of, Michael's, appendix A, thank you for yourself.
Okay, item number one, um, I had a long conversation, well, a longish conversation, with a, um. Contractor who was inspecting the bridge over Hunter Street. Um, for any thoughts that might need to be rectified. Meanwhile, we had colleagues, uh, a little bit further. Those, I don't think your, my direction was, uh, back towards this indirect road that had scattered up on, um. Uh, but they were actually doing the inspections, I think knocking hammers and seeing if there are any holes. Um, and it was his view that this might be the start of the spending of the money to upgrade the scenic walk and the railway walk. Because we will all recall, so I have one point three, but including section one oh six money, um, was put aside to upgrade that path. So the engine is seen to be now going into action mode. That's a good thing, that find that money will be spent to do with that path, what we have always been wanting to do. So I think it's good to see this on the agenda, not just being, staying on the long times, you know. Um, so any other information or intelligence on that would be most grateful.
Well, hands above at the centre of the table, Fran first.
Um, so, I'm assuming you're talking about the railway bridge. Um, the work that they were doing, um. The signs that they've got up and what they've done is, um, clear vegetation that was growing on it. So it was things like, um, buddleia, et cetera, that have seeded, um, trees that were in there and tidying up. As far as I'm aware, the, um, plans have not yet been drawn up to start doing the works on it. So, um, they're especially consulting with us as a town council when.
When they are.
When, um, they're, they're at that stage, which I don't know, and they are, so I, I think that, um, quite probably. It is, um. Um. It's not connected, um, necessarily, because it's been done.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
And then you're going on the basis of what man in the.
John.
Firstly, the bridge will still be bought to British Rail.
No.
I, I'm speaking, thank you much.
It's not.
Okay. Um, in which case I'll. Um, most railway bridges, in my experience, um, have been doubt of British Rail. All the bridges from my late employer's land that belonged to British Rail. Even though the bridges had long since been failed to be used by it, unless anyone's got any evidence who owns the bridge. I suggest that they produce the evidence. Secondly, to the best of my knowledge, the proposals haven't been put forward yet to what the scheme were. Also, there is two elements of it, which is factually correct. There's the element which this council will be responding to, which is a root modification order, which is on the university land. Which is one element, no, not directly related to the project. And then there's the actual business case for that, which has not been presented anywhere yet. And to the best of my knowledge, um, they haven't reported it at this stage, or they will be reporting it to the local members. Um, where they're going to go forward at that point, I expect they'll report it to the council. So I think we must be careful that, though I celebrate the works being done. I would, but I'm not quite sure two things are related, um.
So is this the cycle we're doing at the council?
I've been.
No.
No, no, it's, it's.
So why railway, just want to see the impact of this.
It was, and what John was trying to get to is that when we, as a council, put the money in.
It comes under a varnish in.
Yeah, yeah, we put it in, it was section one oh six agreement, which was in the right way, Catherine, out at the time in twenty fifteen, it went in.
Wasn't actually see the money being spent.
Yeah, and, but the money which go is part of a government, apart from the previous government.
Yeah.
Which is one point seven million.
Yeah.
Which went into the, um, something like, um, which was going to fund the railway walk. Yeah, so, and it was going to be solarit and won't do no.
Still waiting.
And we're still waiting for the case to be presented.
Table is saying, well, it looks like something's about to happen, but we're saying, not, well, not so. John?
Man was there wearing a Buckinghamshire, Shire Council jacket. He is the final council bridge inspector. He told me that this bridge and the other bridge is managed by the Shire Council.
So we know.
And they were inspecting it, and it was speculation that maybe it's the start of the, of the rechange. He didn't know, he just knew he'd been sent out with his colleagues to check whether the bridge was in good order.
It's just good.
Because they're, they're meant to.
So let's celebrate that, yeah, okay, right.
That's all.
Quite see where any more of some, you know, red meat and that type of stuff. Um, okay, so this is, uh, the appendix A, and thank you, John, for raising that. Anything else under the actions? Anybody else wants to query where it's got to? Yeah, also, Fran.
Um, I believe that, um, the archaeologists have, um. Given. given.
What number is it?
I'm going to say. Um, on the, um, on the, um, bodies that were found in Scotland, sort of found, um, at West End Farm. Um, however, I am of the understanding that it's not, not yet in the public domain. I think that's the only, only, um.
Yeah. No more.
Yes, I have a copy of the report. Um, well, I am. Establishing that report is a report which can be shared, because who owns it becomes crucial to things. But the reverse, the positive thing is the archaeological work has been done. So that's a really positive thing.
Yeah.
We've been waiting long enough, but it's a very detailed report, um.
Really shit.
Very interesting.
Very interesting.
If you understand archaeology and you understand science, yeah.
Yes.
Um. I've read it three times now and I'm still confused, or was the first time.
There were plenty giant broken shoes like.
I'm not very, I won't be very detailed, I just say it's a very thorough report.
Okay.
And I think that.
Is there anything we need to learn?
Not now, as soon as I'm able to. Share it, I will, but I've asked and I haven't been given permission yet, so.
Thank you.
And because I don't know who owns the report. You know, and there's, there's this.
So you want to take it conservatively?
Well, no, I've never taken that, I'm taking a more, um, careful. I wouldn't use the word conservative, I wouldn't really get, but I'm, I'm paid for care. Um.
Right.
You do, you got that, didn't you?
I know you got it. Um, John, sorry, where's your paper?
Yeah, item, just two points, item seven and item eight. Um, item seven, have we got the response from these areas? Can we now have the report that we have about the locations of the site queue position? And same with item eight, I noted the other day that the spring that arises somewhere near Rumball's well appears to have chosen the path up to, um, the housing estate, or sort of well, has been the main thoroughfare for its own flow. So to actually get through the gate, which is going to be taken off its hinge, um, you've got to kind of walk up the street.
There was also a vice of Catherine.
Yeah.
Council Draper reported that two months ago.
Sorry, what was that?
Council Draper reported it two months ago.
I know, I know, I'm just saying it's got worse. It's got worse, it's not to do with the blockage, the stream is just going down.
It is streaming, but they're refusing to think about the, the meeting for any.
So there's a query here about the, uh, council, our present town council, part of the reports, thank you.
To the best of my knowledge, Joe, no, I checked the steel pipe, it's not for me today.
No, not yet. Yes. Uh, Robin, then.
I don't have order to that, um, Council Draper, um, made, um, the archaeological people aware of the fact that they were, um, digging in the area and, um, to look at doing drainage works, and I believe they were suspended the works, um, and, um, and because they, they hadn't got permission to do what they were going to do, and I'm not sure whether anyone's ever seen the archaeological report for that area either, but I have it. And, um, and, um, and, um, but, um, I think that archaeology remained, acted immediately. So, um, because, you know, thanks to Lucy, who actually picked up on it.
Yeah.
And thanks to Bruce, who found some of the material.
It's such an interesting site, I don't know, the great trash pit sorted out. Dan, what are you on that?
I was, I was just going to say that, um, Lucy had, um, Lucy discussed it immediately.
Yeah.
And the works that was being carried out by the developers still, this is land that is still in the, in the, um,
There.
In the control of the developers, um, and, um,
it's.
Um, subject to, yeah.
Um, so it's not, when does it come out to?
Um, we don't know anything about that.
No.
No.
Yeah, okay. Notice, um, anything else under appendix A? Right, um.
I just think, who do you care, it might be worth, um, having, um, a discussion around the whole fact of it, because I was approached by, indirectly by Time Team when I did do, did you find some areas in Buckingham? And the areas that were suggested didn't come up because of issues. But I thought we might have got Time Team interested, but then was at a loss how to go forward with the stuff, so. Um, I don't know, they even were bothered to think about it, obviously.
Yes.
Um.
Yes.
I just wanted to play with the crowd, didn't I? Um, but, um, but, um, I think that it's something we can perhaps all talk about more in the future, I'll, I'll go back to the person if they can understand that.
Yeah, okay.
There's a lot. One person's idea is not necessarily sufficient.
Great. We'll wait that for a minute. Um, so next up, I've got appendix B, um, which is the amendment to Buckingham Council Constitution, ten minutes of the report. Who wants to talk in that's way to this?
Yes.
I was starting to make the question. I'm quite convinced, um, thank you very much, Catherine, it's on.
Yeah, yeah.
Much appreciated. It's actually, well, she's done, they've consolidated, um, issue very well, so the charges are nothing. Where are they?
Okay, uh, so, I'll.
I didn't just say that things will be a lot easier going forward. Um, we were not very successful. Buckingham Town Council and, um, other people in the old constitution managing to get anything called in. I would say out of confusion rather than spitting, um, we could never get anything in, but I did manage to sit through a planning application in Perdah and to discuss whether people should have party classes, um, in one village. Yeah, we could discuss that in Perdah, but we couldn't discuss really large applications with drains and sewage works in Buckingham. So I think that going forward, um, the difference of the council and the constitution, I'm sure we'll probably be seeing more applications.
Yeah.
With planning reasons go to committee and.
That's a crucial thing to have to add.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, so.
So you're happy with this?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I wanted it stronger for the member than that, but, um, but it's a, it's a vast improvement on what it felt before. When, um, basically the chair of the.
Um, yeah.
The way to be thought, and as you don't commit it, they're down there. My, and I've got written evidence to prove it.
Thank you. John?
I still think the power rests with the chair of the, of the committee and with the chief and officer. Because he, if you put in a request, recall it, but there's no.
Yeah.
There's no absolute.
Presumably the power rests with them, because it's, they do have, presumably the power rests with them, because the power rests with them.
Well, it does, and I would say that they are, they've, they've had to really kind of, um, try and square a circle here, because even if the planning application is very thoroughly in one councillor's war, single versus single councillor war, somehow they put it against the set from a neighbouring council, neighbouring war.
Yeah.
That's even ridiculous, and actually probably, I'm not sure if that's constitutional, because you, you know, we know how bored focused councillors are. So we just, have they done that, I'm assuming? Because they had to have this measure within a three year or two plus law.
Exactly.
Two, so I think it should still have been one councillor, with, with their own understanding, and I think they, they're fudging it with this. But it seems, you know, going back to earlier on in the agenda, um, the, the government are going to, they're going to bring in the legislation whereby there'll be a set list of these things, can be discussed, maybe these things.
Yes.
Worked.
Yeah.
And I think you've got a pretty cut across on this anyway.
Yeah. Uh, Robin, then.
Just, just to say, when we did the internals, um, cobbling together this thing, um, Stuart Wilson pointed out to them what the constitution actually says. What it actually says is the members have the power to call it in under constitution. If they meet those criteria, it doesn't matter a jot what the chairman or the planning officer says, it will go to committee. If it's not for any reason, no, it was read out in a meeting in our present, I didn't raise, but Stuart Wilson did. He read it, the constitution, pointed out to the officers what the constitution actually said. And the officers then had to agree that he was right. Um, so if you, that, and it's really how badly it's drafted, which is giving you the loons that. I, I agree with you though, John, one member should be able to call stuff in. Um, but what we've got now is a hybrid, um, system based upon what they thought the electoral result might be. Um, um, and, uh, it's not worked out like that, has it locally? So, um, the power's all in other places now.
So can we have some standard comments on this, or are we move minded to move to say, look, not a good lot on it?
Yeah, I know, good, yeah.
Thank you very much, and huge thanks to.
But we might call everything.
Well, we're getting close to the start.
I don't know.
You're very much, um. So we've done, that, and it's, we, we're just receiving the table, showing the changes, yeah. Uh, item thirteen, town and parish council.
Four.
Quarterly forum.
If someone's wanted to postpone this till August, we might have the slides when you have.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, because I think that there would be really useful, there would be useful data, so it's on, but, um, good.
Agreed.
Did they manage to get a full proof of it? Yes, uh, Frank, you want?
I was just going to say, I think it was a very strange question from council again, or really, um, um, about creative use of garages. Anyway, very odd, very odd, and I.
And I watch now, what is it?
He says, he says, some of these that get more creative are used garages, sixty percent are not used for anything but storage. How is one garage per house sustainable? It needs extra land and a drive. Terrace housing allows better insulation, have garages and blocks, or utilize brownfield sites which already have hard surface. So that's, that's why, by, yeah, let's put all the poor people together in, in, in terrace houses, um, and not let them have anywhere to put, put their bicycles.
Okay. You've had a, you've had a lady in Austin.
Can we just then receive the class notes and thank you very much indeed, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Item fourteen, uh, upgrades, these are rolling lists. Signing, um, but, um, forty one tree planning applications, appendix B. Is it note? I know.
Yeah.
And forty two, four hundred and five, appendix E. And forty three, HMO sisters, appendix F.
I'm too.
No, just. Roger, do you want to comment?
Yeah, I just think, going back to what I said, on the F, can people read the report on HMOs, which I circulated, so see if you've got anything significant on that. Um, because HMOs, the principle of HMOs seems to be now taking on what mayor said is, um, they, impoverished people are now in HMOs and, and it's not really where we, we should be um, having to spend their rest of their lives. Um, and, um, they are growing feature of our, well, it's always well for us, we're not ready to kick our slippers off in our houses, but other people have them, and it's, it's not, it's not good for how we live in. And also I recall that there was questions raised in this, in the previous meeting about, uh, HMO, about the fire and safety and whatever it says.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and, and people being in, you know, cooking stoves and such, they're not ideal. Going back to Victorian slums really, isn't it? But we're, we're, we're going to eat ice.
I think it's, that's, that's, no, it's not what you want.
I, I, I think it's, it's, um, an unintended consequence of, um, uh, an act that came in in order to try to bring up, um, the quality of housing.
Yeah.
But it's, it's becoming now that people can't rent a house with four or five, um.
Yeah.
Friends, um. And these places are being split up into.
Yeah.
Self-contained, well, partly self-contained units, um. We need, we need to be looking at having best quality single person accommodation.
Yeah.
Being provided.
Yeah.
This is work, we can't be sat by other people on.
Okay, right. Um, so thank you very much indeed, moving on. Item fifteen, matters to report, members to report any important breaches, damages to purpose and redundant signage in the town. Uh, access issues or any other matter, John.
Yeah, there's been some discussion on, on social media about the new state up on Osea Way. But it appears that they, they used a drop curve on the, um, state side of the road. But if you use the drop curve to cross over to the other side of the road, there is no drop curve opposite it. And I just think we need to get a, crack a small whip over the developers and say, come on, guys. If you're going to put in drop curves, can you at least make sure?
They match up.
That they match up and not just at the entrance exits, but also throughout the step. I have to say that I think the Tindric Road State, um, is pretty poor when it comes to drop curves. There seem to be lots of curves that just end in a cliff, which I would say, we don't need to, it'd be easier to put in a drop curve when they put in the pavements. And we don't want to repeat what happened, um, on Newcombe Way, where they managed to put in a ramp to the, um, playground and then put a non-drop curve next to the ramp, but next to the steps, they put in a drop curve.
So who did rely on these?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I don't know whether the.
Is it highways or was it?
Are in that much detail, but can, can we contact the developer and say, but please, consider the needs of people, you know, using scooters, using buggies, people using wheelchairs, anybody on wheels. They need drop curves to get around. I'll repeat again, there's a real problem at the end of Badgers Way, where it intersects on, on, on the Borton Road at the eastern end of it, there's still a random assault of the drop curves there. And there should be at least one, two, three, four, five, six, I think currently there are about two. And that really needs to be sorted out as well, I, I know that they're closing, um, Borton Road for some unknown reason, it was a drain thing, I don't, it's. But I, I'm, I'm still hoping that they've developed in drop curves, but can we repeat that request? That we need drop curves, I know Lisa, who's going to take.
Okay, Josh, this matter is from enforcement breaches, so we'll check and see if there's been a breach.
They'll check.
Okay, that's right.
Uh, I forgot who was first, it's got, Frankie.
I was, I was just going to say, they've, obviously they've put in pavement on the, um, Osea Way estate side, um, that the other side is existing.
Yeah.
So they probably will have to get, um, permission from highways, um, to do that. So it's, I, I, I think probably, um, 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 slamming the developers for, for not doing it and even doing it on side of the road, where they've only made pavement on one side of the road. Um, it's probably not their responsibility to do it on the other side of the road.
Okay, well, we noticed, I think we did a good thing, I did, it's something I did, check, check, get it checked out, right, Robin, then.
I think John's point about improving access is the right point. I think we need to do is, and that's wrong, mayor says is, the other side of the road is established plan of pathway. There are going to be allegedly some footpaths and walkways away from this estate, um, which haven't gone in yet. So I think maybe, uh, we were disheartened, we were disadvantaged by the fact that when it comes to the detailed planning of this estate would never go to committee, and we didn't get to discuss any of that committee, it was all done um, in-house, um, so I think we are, we are bound by whatever they agreed in those cabinet, um, um, planning officer stroke, le, um, chairman of the council, agreed, so we're bound by that. What we can do is go in to find out who is the option, who's handling the, um, it's far too early to be the adoptions of anything on that estate, but on the positive note, if John goes up there and gets, um, cross, there isn't, um, or I go up there and get cross, as a matter of fact, there is now a, um, I think there's a new, one of those AD units.
AED.
AED unit, so if we get up there, John, and me and you lose our temper about, so I mean.
Yeah.
There is one there, if anyone thinks of that one, but the terms, we both get cross, they can come and jumpstart us. Which is, which is something that Richard Watkins managed to achieve, so there is a positive, um, if we get stuck up there, John.
Um, I almost.
I don't want to support.
Sorry, I'm a sense, sorry.
Sorry, your time lagged, I'm, I'm.
I'm actually having a base.
I was just going to say, with the, um, uplifting scandal of Villiers Maze and Dipali, uh, can I add in the one for the recently flat-fronted refurbished, whatever it is in the middle of town. Whatever it is in the middle of town.
Formula R SPCA.
Yeah, the R SPCA one, with the two blue boards, they now have got uplighters underneath them.
Um.
Hmm, so.
You're late at night, I know.
Uh, and I don't know whether it comes under this, but, um, in our own domain, the paddock in Bourne Park, uh, a lot of those, uh, stumps are, you know, for the fencing, are quite severely worn with the, uh, with the old strimmer problem, I think.
Yes.
Uh, and they are wobbling a little bit.
Okay, noted, thank you very much, it's perfect. Anything else to note around town, Fran?
I'm sorry, I'm just, just a really quick one, um, about the drop curves, et cetera, and it, it shows the needs to be looking at the infrastructure, the footpaths, et cetera. And for those to be put in, really, during the development stage, not before. Um, rather than later afterwards, and then trying to, trying to sort it all out.
We, we, yeah, we, we, I don't know if it's the present, and probably any week or two, with, um, Lace Hill, it took us, um, a hell of a long time, John was mayor at the time when we did it, don't know how long it was, but we get a subject, you know, slowly.
Yeah.
Um, um, into there, because everyone was, um.
Don't, don't use too much of your skill, because we're forcing them to me.
So I think it's important, good thing you're getting bold at the early stage.
Exactly, yeah, I think what Fran was saying, that point, I think that's very well made. Uh, I have to say that, about, I hope to see in Canada, that they are so well organised over there. And you sense that they actually think about things before them, rather than us and sort of strabbing them, sort of things, so. Thank you very much, Nick, um, I'm moving on, if I may, item six, chairs announcements, um, I don't think I have any, because we've dealt with.
Well, I don't just to remind them, this week we'll probably have the, um. Uh, bit of laundry, you know, that's, I don't know, it's, it's, you know.
Month of twenty?
Okay.
Before the time.
Yeah.
We, 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 still be four councils.
Still be four, it's also hugely important. Um, then item seventeen, um, uh, which, that's actually much debate on, the date for the next meeting, Monday eighteenth of August, twenty twenty five. By which time, I hope you're charged with.